I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrant position. And also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivana Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tolls?
Here.
Councilwomen Williams and Worthy are absent today. Councilwoman Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
No.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day you've given us, God. We thank you for the time that we're here at City Hall. We ask you to, our thoughts to be your thoughts, we ask you for wisdom as we go about doing the business of the city. We also, Father, want to pause and pray for our city with the events that have unfolded, Father, in recent days. We just pray for safety, Father, and we pray for families that have been affected. We pray all these in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Human Relation Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
And that includes the work session and the city council meeting. The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of June 3rd through the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Okay, we have some proclamations, and Mayor, if you'll come with me down here to...
Yeah.
We have some proclamations this morning, and the Mayor's gonna help me. I'll let you hold the pen.
Okay.
First, we would like for Ms. Valerie to come forth, her board and staff members. This proclamation is from the City of Gaston. Whereas northeast Alabama's success depends upon every child succeeding and reaching their full potential in life. And these objectives are more easily met when young people possess a solid foundation of support that will help them become well-educated, confident, and productive citizens. And whereas mentoring is a proven effective strategy that helps children and young adults by matching them with a caring, responsible adult who can provide guidance and direction. And whereas a mentor helps build character, encourage success, boost confidence, lift expectation, and inspire young people to do their best. And whereas mentors serve as friends, role models, teachers, and sources of stability and support during a critical time in a child's life. And whereas research shows that mentoring has beneficial and long-term positive effects on youth by increasing their academic engagement and decreasing the likelihood of substance abuse and risky behavior. And whereas mentoring strengthens community economics and social being by helping youth fulfill their potential while helping maintain healthy families and promoting more vibrant communities. And whereas hundreds of local children are in need of a caring adult mentor in their lives, and closing this mentoring gap would take more investment, partnership, and volunteers who are ready to make a difference in the lives of a child. And whereas Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northeast Alabama is now in its 40th year of serving youth through one-on-one mentoring. This proclamation is an opportunity to raise public awareness on the importance of mentoring, recognizing a brighter future for our local youth in North Alabama. Therefore, I Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, do hereby acknowledge the impact and valued services provided to our community as we commemorate Big Brothers and Big Sisters of North Alabama for their 40th year of mentoring youth in North Alabama. Sherman Guyton attested by Ivana Nelson.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
And I didn't pronounce your last name because I wasn't sure, so you pronounce.
Okay.
It's Valerie.
Paglisi. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. You know, anniversaries are a wonderful opportunity to think back on our memories of the past, our past successes, and also to pave a future to our future success. And when I think back to 1982, when we were established, the City of Gaston was instrumental in that because you supported us all these years through our so many ways, our fundraisers certainly, and with housing, our staff, our office these years. I can recognize the Maintenance Department for coming and helping us with painting and different things, getting a squirrel out of the ceiling, and just all the wonderful support. The Parks and Recreation have helped us with activities and events, and this is a wonderful milestone for us. We're very happy that we're still here, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention all the other community support, United Way of Northeast Alabama. And subsequently, we got United Way Funding in Calhoun and Talladega Counties, the Alabama Department of Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention that supported us for 23 years, the Community Foundation of Northeast Alabama that supports us through grant support. And then through generous donations through the years, we were able to establish an endowment, and that really helps our future goals because it allows, one day, it may supply a monthly salary, and then it'll also let us apply for federal grants and be matching funding for that. And of course, those grants support salaries, so we're excited about that. And we just thank you. I have my wonderful board here and appreciate their support and staff, and thank you again. We appreciate it.
Take a picture.
She was a big sister. It will, Ms. Angela Anderson and Dr. Lou Mitchell come forward, please. And if you want to bring the rest of your representatives, they may come also. This is a proclamation from the City of Gaston. Whereas Mrs. Angela Anderson, Executive Director of the East Central Alabama, this is the AHGC, the Alabama Health Education Center, was introduced to RAM. This is the Remote Area Medical in 2017. And whereas Dr. Lou Mitchell, a private dentist in Gaston, participated in a similar charity event in 2017 in Florida. And whereas they both shared a passion for access to health care for rural Alabamians, and both saw the great need to bring this charity event to Alabama. And whereas Mrs. Anderson and Dr. Mitchell began the planning process with and with an amazing steering committee of selfless community servants. And whereas this steering committee called the Community Host Group, met weekly for over two years and raised $65,000 from generous community sponsors. And whereas RAM, the City of Gaston, the Eddewall County Commission, the UAB Medical Center, 18 community churches, and over 500 volunteers all came together as one unified group to provide free medical, free dental, and free vision for the citizens of northeast Alabama. And whereas during the week of April the 22nd through the 24th, 2022, at the first RAM event ever held in the state of Alabama, 612 patients received multiple free services from health care providers at Gaston City High School in Gaston. Now therefore be it resolved that I Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gaston, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby present this proclamation to Mrs. Angela Anderson, Executive Director of the RAM Community Group, and Dr. Lou Mitchell, Volunteer Clinic Coordinator. They both graciously accepted this proclamation on behalf of the hundreds of selfless volunteers who made RAM happen. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and seal and cause the seal of Gaston to be affixed this, the 13th day of June 2022. Sherman Guyton, Mayor, attested by Ivana Nelson, City Clerk. Dr. Mitchell, would you all like to say something?
Yes. Well, first of all, I'm humbled to receive this. I want to thank the Council, and thank Mayor Guyton and Ms. Tolls. It wouldn't have happened without the City of Gaston, okay? I'll tell you that. We, I believe almost every department in the city participated in this event. There's a tremendous amount of moving parts when you plan something like this, and so we had a marvelous steering committee, and so we accept these proclamations on behalf of all of them that put so much into this event. I came to Gaston 47 years ago. I grew up in South Alabama and knew very few people, but Gaston is my home. I love it, and I knew Gaston could pull this off, and they did. And to me, we set an example, not only for the city, but for the state, and really for national leaders, that when people come together, you can solve problems and move forward. And I think the RAM event was a perfect example of that. Thank you very much.
Dr. Mitchell, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Can you share some of the total numbers, or I don't know if you have them, but just about number of patients seen?
I will, and Ms. Anderson can share these as well.
Okay.
You know, we had 612 to register. Now, when you consider some of that 612 did both dental, vision, and medical, it was like well over 1,000 visits.
Right.
And...
That's fantastic.
You know, you live and learn. This was the first one we had ever had. I think we could even plant a budwein just because we know, we know more about it.
Yeah.
And so it was, I can tell you, I saw tears of joy numerous times, numerous times. I mean, it just, it would break your heart. We did little flipper partials, which is just a real inexpensive way to replace a front tooth, okay? And RAM had never done these before. We had a generous lab man in Gaston to do our work for us, and I'm telling you, you just wouldn't believe the tears of joy we saw. One particular patient had a college degree, and she was missing her front tooth on both sides, and she just, I mean, we couldn't stop the tears, I'm telling you. And then she said, now I can apply for a job. So that's...
Congratulations. That's fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I also want to commend the City of Gaston for being the best champions for the RAM event, and certainly examples and champions for the entire state of Alabama, to bring this assistance to our health care needs here in Gaston and beyond. I do believe every department of the city was involved in some way in the RAM event from the Council to the Parks and Recreation, to the IDA, to the Maintenance Department. We couldn't have done it without you, for sure. One thing that I'd like, if you'll indulge me, I want to read to you the names on the steering committee. I don't think this has been printed anywhere, and you'll see that some of the people that began with us way back before 2020 are, were not able to make it to our 2022 event, but we want their names read into the record anyway. These are the people that did all the work on the ground, and these are the people that hopefully will live in your memory as bringing this to Gaston. Dr. Lou Mitchell, Renee Baker, Dr. LeAnn Bowman, Carol Carlisle, Dr. Tony Catanzaro, Ally Cossey, Connie Lane, Catherine Martin, Ann Mitchell, LaShayla Carter, Ruth Moffett, Joan Hightower, Belinda Reddick, Wayne Rowe, Judy Swafford, Dr. Mary Wallace, Thomas Worthy, Bill Hayes, Misty Ledbetter, Dr. Chester Hicks, Susan Copeland, Beverly Godfrey, Puddin' McArthur, Dr. Ed Miller, Dr. Xavier Smith, Dr. Tom Page, Mary Gomillion, Eric Wright, Debbie Brooks, Mark Condra, and Dave Tumlin, as well as Michael Rogers. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, you wanted to say something? Okay, we will continue with our agenda. Our first item is unfinished business, it's an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2022 budget to reflect receipts and appropriation of the 2022 ADCCARE Act. This is the CDBG CV program funds totaling $400,000. And this ordinance was presented last week for first reading. This grant will be used for project costs associated with the demolition of the Elliott Community Center located at 2829 West Megan Boulevard. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property at 205 Tuskegee Circle in District 1. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on May 10th. There is a recommendation from the building official to adopt this resolution. What is the pleasure of the Council?
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next item is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property at 216 South 16th Street in District 3. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on May 10th. There is a recommendation from the building official to table the resolution another 30 days. What is the pleasure of the Council?
Make a motion that we table for an additional 30 days.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Do we have a second?
I do.
Okay. Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
We have a resolution authorizing bid 3477 for Hillsborough Drive Resurfacing Project. The city engineer has recommended awarding the bid to Vulcan Material Asphalt and Construction LLC, and the amount is $137,034. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next resolution is authorizing a special use permit for AT&amp;T Wireless. This is for modification of their equipment at the existing wireless telecommunication facility that's located at 4290 Old Pump Station Road. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution and final resolution is appointing a member to the zoning board of adjustment. This appoints Travis Watkins for a term expiring May 18, 2025. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second.
I just welcome Mr. Watkins aboard. This has been vacant, this membership has been vacant about a couple of months now. I'm just glad we got him to commit to doing this, and I sure do appreciate it.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
We have a department report from our city clerk, and then we'll have citizen requests.
Yes, Madam President, I just wanted to remind everyone that our qualification period begins tomorrow for municipal candidates. We'll be electing or accepting qualifications for candidates for the office of mayor, seven council member seats, and seven school board seats. And so we'll kick that off at 8:00 in the morning. The qualifying fee is $50. We will be observing a holiday on Monday, June 20th. Other than that, we'll qualify every day until June 28th, and our office will remain open until 5:00 PM on June 28th to comply with state law for closing out that period. Election Day will be August 23rd. If a runoff is necessary, it will be September 20th, which is four weeks later. Thank you.
Okay. We have citizen requests, Mr. David Woodit. Okay, Mr. Woodit's not here. We have Joseph Cole. Good morning.
Qualifying starts tomorrow, and I want to thank each and every council member for your service. We have our disagreement in policy, but I respect all the unopposed positions that you serve because service is not appreciated by most people, so I want to thank you for your service. And Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your 16 years of service in this city. And when I came back to Gaston some years ago to speak, the mayor was one of those that gave me my first plaque when I came back, he and the Southern Christian Leadership Conference. So I respect you immensely. We've had our disagreements, not personally, but we had our disagreements, and I just want to thank you all because I know diversity is very important. And when I came back, I was able to see, excuse me, the first African American to serve as president of this council. Secondly, I was able to see the first African American, African American female to serve on the council, Council of Tolls, and laid on the same individual served as president of the council. So it shows what can happen in cities, and it can show what happens when you have diversity. There had been one mark that was always thrown up, and I've heard it mentioned, I've mentioned it before myself, that there are 18 department heads in the City of Gaston, and none of those are African American. But to the mayor's credit, when he became mayor of this city, most people's in these positions that he was serving over, so he was not going to just fire and dismiss people because of that. But he did appoint an African American, too, and that was, I think, of the Recreation Department. I just want to get this out in the open because a lot of times people say, I come in and criticize this, that, and the other. I care less about what people say. When I feel like I'm right on the issue, I'm going to speak it. And I just want you all to know that I respect all of you, and I don't dislike any of you. But I want to pour a little salt on this now because I want to bring up an issue, Madam President, which you and the council does not have any opposites over, but you are the second highest elected official in this city, and all of the council members are elected. And this has to do with some issues that have been taking place over at the venue. At the venue, you have one white minister, you have two white females, and you have one African American who works at the venue. The African American was there two years before the whites came to the venue, and when they came, he had keys to the building, they took his keys, and the white supervisor there do not allow him to work in the office, and I have seen pictures where she had put his belongings outside. And it's been an ongoing thing with them because he has received a number of things dealing with discipline. He's also went through a termination here a few weeks ago, which they decided to give him probation. And the issue at hand, I'm gonna talk about, I'm gonna sit down, occurred last Wednesday. Last Wednesday, I think he was scheduled from 11:00 to 7:30. The officials left at 4:30. The white female came back, who's supposed to have close ties to City Hall, and she told him to get out of the office. And if he didn't get out, she was gonna call the police to remove him. Now, this is an employee who's at work, who's working his shift in the office doing some work, and she told him to get out, and in the process of putting his things out, she stomped his foot, which caused him to have to go to the doctor the following day. He reported this incident to officials, and to add to this, the following morning, he receives an email from the white male telling him that he was no longer working for the City of Gaston. I have been under the impression, and I have been told, that only this gentleman here could terminate someone, and I didn't see the mayor's name on it, and I haven't seen anything since, sent to him since with the mayor's name on it. But it's not going to end there. But I just want you to know, some of these things are going on, and the male probably didn't know about it. I tried to reach him, but was unable to reach him. But sometimes, white females have difficulties with young black males, especially intelligent black males. But we should not get into a position because we hold a position, we can do what we want to do. And that's why I cry about diversity. When you have whites over everybody, if the employee is black, who does he have to go to? If he goes above his supervisor head, he's speaking to a white individual, and that's gonna cause friction because they're gonna do whatever they can to get the person out. So I'm just trying to bring this to your attention, y'all may have questions, you may not, but I wanted to present this to you. And as I get ready to sit down now, I want to thank you for this time, and hopefully we can get to a point where we can work together on things, and we won't have to have me come here because I don't want to come here. I want to start doing work with these kids, and I want to thank law enforcement for preventing a major tragedy on last week. So it really is time for us to work together because so much crazy stuff is going on, and we don't need to be divided. Now, I'm going to leave, so if anybody wants to say something to me or ask me a question, I don't want you wait till I get out the door to lambast me, lambast me now, or else I will go over here and take my seat.
The only thing that I can say, or that I will say, that what you're talking about is a toll personnel situation, and as far as personnel is concerned, and I know you're giving that for our knowledge.
Thank you, that's correct.
But we, as a council...
Don't have anything, I understand.
We're legislative, we're supposed to stay in our lane, and I try to stay in my lane and not meld into, you know, into personnel. Good to have that information, but you know, I can't, I can't give you an answer to it.
But you can, you can ask questions, that's what I'm saying. Not to me, but I'm saying even in your position, you can ask questions.
And we can ask, yeah, you're right.
But you can't do anything against.
Right.
But you can't do anything against, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Due to Juneteenth holiday next week, the garbage schedule will be as follows. Monday's route will be collected on Tuesday, June 21, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, June 22. There will be no changes for Thursday and Friday. We'll now have remarks by the council and mayor. Let's see. Do I start with, what time, it's 11:30. We shouldn't be up here at 12:00, should we, audience? You don't have to answer, I'll answer for you. We'll start with Councilman Reed.
Yes, ma'am. I don't have anything except thank everybody who came to buy yard sale Friday, that was great. Bobby Kane, Bobby Hill Kane, sold everything I had, so if you're looking for junk, I ain't got anymore.
All right. Councilman Cannon?
I'd just like for everybody to hear, at home, just pray for our city and our county. We just, we just need our prayers right now. That's it.
Councilman Wilson?
I just wanted to clarify that one budget ordinance that we passed for the $400,000 in C B D G C V funds as a federal grant that we got from the Community Development Block Grant Program that we'll be using to go towards the removal of the existing Elliott Community Center building, so that we can make way for the new Senior Wellness Center that was approved as part of the A R P funds. So just wanted y'all to know that. And in general, obviously, we've been instructed not to talk too much about the activities over the last few weeks with the police department, but I just want to say good job to all the staff involved and the police officers that responded. We're very thankful for you.
Okay. Councilman Ba.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to echo heartfelt thanks to our Police and Fire Department, job well done. And our thoughts and prayers are with both departments and with families and people that have been directly affected. We had some great proclamations today, some familiar faces here in Gaston to the RAM Group, Dr. Lou Mitchell and Angela Anderson. Thank you all so much for that vision that was planted a few years back, and it's wonderful to hear the lives that were changed due to the efforts and the volunteer and the donations through our local community. And Lou, I couldn't agree more, when we come together like you led us and like this group did, we can move mountains, and we can change our city and change our, change our whole county, change our lives. And so it's just, it's refreshing to see that. And it's just, and you mentioned something about doing it better the next time. I sure hope there is a next time. So I think, I think it's obviously needed. And to Valerie Puglisi, thank you for all the work that you and your board do for the children in Gaston and Etowah County that need mentors, that need that influence. What a, what a task it is. I'm sure sometimes it seems never-ending, and probably the mountain's too high to climb, but you continue to do that, and your volunteers and your board continue to pour your lives into children, and that is so important for every community, and ours especially. So thank you for all that you do and your board. In 40 years, it doesn't seem like it could be 40 years, but it's been 40 years. That's, what a, what a great program. You know, and it's a proven program. It's not like you're making things up as you go. What y'all do is a proven method to change young children's lives for the better. So thank you is just not enough, but that's all, I guess I can say is thank you. So we sure appreciate what you do to our, do for our community. That's all I have, Madam President.
Mayor?
Yes, I'd just like to say that when I ran for mayor, I thought I lost my mind. I never realized I'd be here 16 years, but I've enjoyed every bit of it. And I want to thank all the people who work for the city, and all the departments, and the councils, and everybody that I've worked with since I've been here. And everybody has always been really polite, straight up, helpful, and everything, and I appreciate what you've done. And I think, working together, we've gotten a lot of things done that people don't realize yet. We've got some projects going on, but I do appreciate all of everyone's help. And we have some smart people who work in City Hall, and I'm not talking about the mayor, I'm talking about some of our people who work for the city. They do a lot, good job, and I don't think they get a lot of notoriety a lot of times, but thank you, and I will see you all around. Thanks.
All right. Dr. Mitchell, are you the big brother to Catherine Mitchell, or she's the oldest?
I'm the little brother.
Okay. Well, I just wanted, I just wanted to say, now I see where you get your go-getting from, because Dr. Mitchell, Dr. Catherine Mitchell, was the reading guru for the state of Alabama. In fact, she's the one who put Alabama on the map as far as reading. So just want everybody to know where you got all your spunk from, from Dr. Mitchell. But we appreciate everything that you do, and we hope that this will continue. Thank you. Is there anything else coming for the council? I call for a motion to adjourn.